I would like to call the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Woburn Planning Board to order, please. Karen, could you call the role?
Kevin Donovan is absent. Jim Callahan.
Here.
Bob Doherty.
Here.
Dave Edmonds is absent. Carolyn Turner.
Here.
Mike Francesca.
Here.
Chair Claudia Vol- Bogan.
Here. The one item on our agenda is a public hearing, which has continued to consider a proposed zoning amendment to A amend the city of Woburn zoning ordinance by adding a new section thirty-two entitled Life Sciences and Business Mixed Use Overlay District, L-Bod, and B amend the Woburn zoning map to overlay the new L-Bod district onto the parcels shown on Woburn assessors' maps as map twenty-nine block one, lot one, map twenty-nine block one, lot two, map twenty-one, map, map twenty-nine block one, lot three, map twenty-nine block one, lot four, and map twenty-nine block one, lot five. All right, Tina, who do we have today?
Sure, so we have members of the team here. I have yet to see, double checking, I do not see a legal counsel here yet, to my knowledge, but I do see the petitioner.
Um, I do, I, I do see Attorney Reynolds.
Oh, my apologies. Then I would love to turn it over to her. She is, she is representing the petitioner this evening.
Counsel, welcome.
Thank you, and I apologize. My son's has taken over my Zoom from school, so I think his name was on my.
Oh, that's all it took to fill me in.
Yeah. Um, good, nice to see you all again. As you know, my firm represents TDC Development Group, which is a subsidiary of the Davis Companies. My partner Joe Tarby has several matters before the City Council this evening, including this proposed L-Bod, so he's unable to be here again. But with me, I do have the same group as we had last week. Mike Cantalupa, the Chief Development Officer for the Davis Companies, Chris Yetman, Vice President of Development for the Davis Companies, Tim Williams of Allen and Major, the Site Engineer, Scott Thornton of Vanoss and Associates, who's the Traffic Engineer, and John Eisenberg, Fire Protection and Chemical Engineer. I'm gonna do it again, sort of just a quick overview of the information that we've provided the board today and sort of a summary of where we're at, and then I'm gonna turn it over to a couple of these guys to update you further. So, since the first hearing on this matter, and I believe this is the third, we have provided several, several documentation of some of the points we've already discussed. A memorandum was provided for Ruben and Ruben, which was an overview of the L-Bod, history of the fifteen-hundred-foot distance requirement, a summary of regulations in other communities showing that a high-hazard use is not listed in any of the use tables in those communities that we researched. We provided information on accessory high-hazard use and how it is defined in the International Building Code and being limited to ten percent of the floor area of the story in which it's located. A summary of the building codes, fire codes, and safety code regulating buildings that store and process hazardous materials. Google Earth photos showing various life science uses abutting residential properties. A memorandum dated November first from John Eisenberg, providing background and an explanation of current mass biopharma facility design and operational requirements versus the city of Woburn Group high-hazard occupancy separation distance of fifteen-hundred feet from a residential district. A memorandum dated November fourth, which summarizes the distance requirements, if any, in the communities suggested by the building commissioner. Copies of section three oh seven point one and section five oh eight point two point three of the International Building Code relative to both high-hazard use and accessory high-hazard use. A redacted co-compliance report to illustrate the numerous requirements in place to protect both residents and first responders. Copies of use tables from the communities of Burlington, Waltham, Wilmington, Lexington, Reading, PBD, Danvers, and Marlboro. A memorandum more recently from Ruben and Ruben dated eleven, no, excuse me, November eleventh, which provided a list of alternative uses for the site, which I know was requested at the last meeting, as well as our position as to why the L-Bod would not set a precedent elsewhere in the city of Woburn to disregard the fifteen-hundred-foot distance requirement. After reviewing all of the information we've, excuse me, presented, along with testimony from Mr. Eisenberg, the following facts are clear. The fifteen-hundred-foot separate distance requirement originated several decades ago, first appearing in the Woburn zoning ordinance in nineteen seventy during an era of large chemical manufacturing facilities in Woburn. The L-Bod did not include high-hazard use as a principal use. It's proposed as an accessory use, which cannot exceed ten percent of the floor area in which it's located. The sampling of the eight zoning bylaws in competing communities for life science business showed that none of those communities contained a use in its use table entitled high-hazard use or a distance requirement related there, too. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has strict building, fire, and safety code requirements for all buildings that store and process hazard materials. Under the L-Bod, that the planning board with T-Bod will have an opportunity as a board to hear a presentation on any proposed use of this property and make recommendations to the City Council prior to its vote on any special permit petition. And just as sort of a quick review of the list of alternative uses that we provided in our latest memo, I'm just gonna, you assume I've seen the list. I'm just gonna highlight a few that probably are the most plausible for this property as alternatives. Buy right, physical fitness training, recreation facilities, health, including health clubs, skating rinks, indoor commercial playgrounds, general hospital, special hospital, extended care facility, retail of less than five thousand square feet, a full-service restaurant, medical office, veterinarian office. Those are just a few that we listed out that would be buy right. And then the special permit, buy special permit dwelling units above the first story in a commercial structure, indoor/outdoor racket sports facilities over fifteen thousand square feet, mixed-use hotel, restaurant, facility, physical fitness training, recreation, including health clubs again, but over fifteen thousand square feet, retail over five thousand square feet, a shopping center, fast food restaurant, general office use over fifteen thousand square feet, pet care facility, a car wash, an auto, excuse me, an auto and truck repair garage, a car dealership, which could include accessory repair and storage uses, a gas station, large or small wind energy facilities, or wind monitoring, or meteor, excuse me, meteorological tower. So that's just a summary of some of the, some of the alternative uses, just to give you an idea. I am going to, so I'm gonna introduce or turn it over to Chris Yetman now to present some information to the board regarding the public benefit to the city of Woburn for the L-Bod, and then subsequently ask John Eisenberg to review some additional safeguards with you, and then we can open up to any questions. And Tina, can I just ask if you might be willing to share the screen with Chris again in the event before he presents? Thank you.
My audio has gone silent. There might be a mute situation.
Chris, are you able to unmute? Oh, there you go.
How is that?
Good.
Great. So I'm gonna start with a life science industry snapshot, just to give a picture of the broader market. So in the last year, five million square feet of lab and life science has come to Massachusetts. There's a projection for twenty million additional square feet of lab bio-manufacturing space to be built out by two thousand and twenty-four. This twenty million square feet will have a demand of forty thousand net new jobs again by two thousand and twenty-four. Middlesex County is today really the leader with having more than half of these jobs located within the county at annual salaries well above the national average, the state average, the county average. And Woburn being positioned ten miles outside of Cambridge and Kendall Square is well-positioned to capitalize on this new economy growth. Again, the types of tenants that we'll be targeting here, life science, pharmaceutical, we've also discussed flex research in development. So we have some names here in the life science space, the household names that we've heard of. There's a few others that we have not heard of that we know are out looking for space to do this bio-manufacturing. In addition, we see robotics, we see three-D printing. Here at the bottom, there's some defense contractors that are out in the market looking for areas, whether it be drone space, again, more of that robotics type. And all of these would require a level, a small level of what we've been referring to as high-hazard use as an accessory use. So the exact economic benefits of this proposed project today at two hundred thousand square feet across the two projects, that results in about four hundred to four hundred and fifty net new jobs. And again, that's using that mass bio-projection, which I quoted earlier, and also cross-referencing that with the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Tax base, right now, that thirteen and a half acres of land, which is land without improvements currently generates approximately sixty-six thousand dollars in annual taxes. This proposed project as a GMP would generate an estimated two-point-five million dollars in taxes annually. And that is a figure provided by our tax consultant, Marvin F. Porter and Company. So really, what that means is at stabilization, which we're calling two thousand and twenty-five for this project, give or take, if I grew that land basis today, that tax basis, if I trended that to two thousand and twenty-five, that's an approximate net new two-point-five, two-point-four million dollars of new taxes annually. Those are the economic benefits. If there's any questions on those, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question. If you're taking questions during the presentation. So with, with our, our current pandemic situation and with our, you know, we don't exactly know how or when this will end or whether it will be an endemic. But one thing that seems an interesting outgrowth of this is that plain old office use where people in white-collar jobs show up to peck at a computer all day. That seems to be declining. And what seems to be in demand is space for things like labs that people can't do from home. They can't zoom in and do their experiments and things of this nature. Is that factored into this sort of economic job creation? You, how, how does our current circumstances impact this particular project or what you see in the future with projects like this?
Sure, sure. I think that you're certainly correct. We're seeing the office market, the pool of straight office tenants decline. Across the city, you're seeing, across the city and elsewhere, into the suburbs, into suburban office parks, you're seeing a strong demand for lab renovation projects, lab and life science. That's where the demand has been. I think that you're also correct in that the pandemic has probably given that a shot in the arm. But that was happening before the pandemic, and Boston today is the leader in this. Boston and San Diego are currently the market leaders for the life science space. Now, did, does that impact this economic benefit? Not necessarily. That, that wouldn't impact the tax base or the net new jobs. Where that would potentially, the, the twenty million square feet that's estimated to come in the next few years, I have to believe what we've seen take place across the last year and a half has given that a bit of a push.
So what I see this project essentially being is sort of that I won't, I won't say trial balloon in any sort of pejorative sense, but this is sort of the leading edge of a project coming into the city and pointing out to us perhaps where our zoning code has failed to keep up with the times, so to speak. Because what I'm seeing from your economic benefit situation is that this, this is, maybe, maybe you're the first ones to sort of come in and, and point to our zoning code and say, hey, you know, the future is likely to be this, and your zoning code isn't, isn't up to speed, shall we say? Would you say that's a fair assessment?
Yes, yes, I'd agree with that. I, I believe that we are on the front end of this, on the front end of a wave that's has, has been coming, and I know Woburn does have some GMP, some bio-manufacturing here in the city. Yeah, I'm surprised that we're the first ones to really bring up the issue of the fifteen-hundred feet that we've been discussing, but I, I would agree with your statement, yes.
Well, my understanding is that, yeah, you're not the first bio-life sciences company to come in to Woburn. We have them here, but my understanding is that the, the folks that are already here are dealing with this fifteen-hundred foot by essentially modifying their business practices, getting deliveries more frequently. You know, basically incurring sort of a cost or incurring, you know, employee costs or actual physical costs to, you know, get around this. And so I think you're the first ones to sort of come in and directly point to this and say, hey, you know, is this, is this appropriate? Is this putting your city at a competitive disadvantage to collect the, the tax benefits, the jobs benefits, the economic benefits of this sort of wave that's coming? So I think that would be my answer to that, that observation. Tina, I see your hand up. Would you like to jump in at this point?
I would, I, I had a question. In the earlier part of the testimony, I think it was at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the fact that these types of uses often have less employees per thousand square feet than a number of other uses, say, like a medical office. And I'm looking at the screen, and it talks about this particular project generating somewhere between four hundred to four hundred and fifty new jobs. Now, some of those obviously will be created on-site, but I wanted to ask if there is a sense as to how many jobs are created directly on-site as part of this project? And how many of those new jobs might be spin-off jobs at suppliers and things of that nature? Chris, do you have a elaboration or explanation?
Yes, I do remember us having a conversation with the medical office and as it related to parking. Medical office sees patients, and so the parking demand would, would be greater in terms of this projection versus straight office. I, I couldn't tell you that this is a higher projection than two hundred thousand square feet of, of straight office. I don't believe it, it would be. And would this create, Tina, was the question, would this create jobs outside of downstream jobs?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's a figure of four hundred to four hundred and fifty. I was assuming that those were not all jobs that would be based or created on the site. Yes, I was, I was wondering to what extent, if any, the, this job projection includes the downstream positions that might be created.
These, this four hundred projection would be across these two buildings at, at max capacity.
Okay.
Is, is our projections today based off what we know and how these buildings are staffed traditionally.
And do you have a sense of how many additional jobs might be created downstream by the, you know, use of this space and the businesses in it?
I don't off, offhand. I can certainly research that and get back to you.
Thank you.
All right. Do any other planning board members have any questions so far? And I need a verbal cue since I can't see all of you right now.
Claudia.
Go right ahead, Mike. Oh, wait, is that Mike or Jim?
Yeah.
Jim, go for it.
So my question for Chris is along the lines that Tina touched upon. We don't know exactly how many, we're looking at rezoning of this area. We're not looking at a building or a company project here. So you're saying we're gonna have four to five hundred and fifty jobs. How many of those hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar a year jobs are gonna be allocated to Woburn residents? Or that, that you would expect?
I would expect a Woburn resident who was qualified for the position to have just as good of a shot as anyone else. I would also expect people would want to live close to their home, given what we know today and how, how people work. I think that the way we see people travel for jobs has certainly changed, and I would suspect people would want to live in and around this community where their job is located.
And the difference from the sixty-six five, or the undeveloped property as it is now, to the two-point-four million, the tax base, as you referenced, what would be the difference between a regular office building, tax generation versus this proposed building?
It would certainly be less. I can tell you that. I, I don't have that figure offhand. It would be less. I can tell you that this two and a half million is based off of a GMP tenant. A GMP tenant pays a premium rent. A similar analysis for some of the more research and development uses, that table of tenants that I showed, whether it be three-D printing, whether it be robotics. I also did an analysis with the tax consultant for those uses. And annually, that would be about a million dollars less. So I would suspect office to be, to be close to the, close to that figure, but I do not have that figure in front of me. I can certainly research that and get back to, to the board.
So what is exactly involved in the tax base that you're referring to? Is it a tax rate that the city of Woburn assesses to the building use for this facility versus, we'll just say, a typical office building?
It's a commercial tax rate?
Two-point-four.
Yeah, it's a, the commercial tax rate today is twenty-two-point-eight-six. That's the mill rate. So there's a few different ways to calculate that. Working with Marvin Porter and Company, they did an analysis based on how traditionally Woburn assesses the real estate. There's through construction, it's phased in, so I gave you the stabilized, and that is based off of a revenue calculation. So there's assumed revenue of which the tax accessor, Davis Companies would need to provide the tax accessor the revenue projections and follow-up. And from there, you take off a vacancy rate, you take off a percentage for expenses, and then you calculate your, your tax rate based off the mill rate. Again, twenty-two-point-eight-six is the commercial rate in Woburn today.
Thank you. I'm also, Claudia.
All right. Mike, had you wanted to jump in with a question?
Yes, please, Madam Chair, to Mr. Yetman. I like to kind of pull on the string of, you know, what's allowed in that district currently versus what is being envisioned here. Like, to me, I mean, we, we, we're throwing high-hazard around, and it just sounds really, you know, not, it, it doesn't shed light on, on what we're trying to achieve here as far as, you know, it just sounds very ominous. So looking at some of these uses that are currently allowed by right, what would be the major differences, you say, to what you envision going in here versus, say, like a hospital or like medical offices like that, where I, I'm assuming like hospitals, they, they use some of these hazardous materials. And the same with like, what else is here? A funeral, funeral home. I mean, I'm sure they have a lot of biohazard chemicals there as well. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, we have allowed some buy-right uses here, but what would be the major differences, say, to who we envision versus what's allowed by right? I hope my, my question is clear enough through all that, but you see what I'm getting at, Mr. Yetman?
I, I do, and, and you are correct. Hospital is, you know, live use, a hospital would very likely, I'm gonna look over at John Eisenberg, who's, who's the fire protection engineer and does this day in, day out, deals with high-hazard and H-two use. And he's shaking and said, yes, hospitals do require a high-hazard use occupancy group for, for a certain percentage of the building. I cannot speak to funeral homes. I'm sure they do use a lot of chemicals, and I'm sure that industry is heavily regulated. This, what, what we're talking about here, this bio-manufacturing, a GMP, they, they most likely will require some form of chemical use in storage at a limited quantity without knowing the exact tenant and/or the processes that tenant will require. One could imagine a scenario where we do not trigger those quantities, but to allow flexibility in the marketplace, it's, it's very likely that they will require. And also other uses such as certainly a, a hospital and some of the big box retail that, that we've talked about. You know, I'm just thinking to traffic now versus this proposed use. So the, the traffic of those uses would certainly be, be more significant.
Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions from other board members at this point in the presentation? All right, hearing no one, I would ask the applicant to keep on going if you have more presentation and let us know when you are interested in more questions.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna, and thanks, Chris. I'm gonna turn it over to John Eisenberg and let him give you an update sort of on safety, which is probably a good segue from the end of this Mike's question. So, John, I will let you have the floor, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Ann. What I wanted to do first is address one of the topics that was just mentioned. Actually, two of them. So in the Massachusetts building code and fire code, so seven-eighty CMR is the building code, five-twenty-seven CMR is, is our fire code. Each of those codes have quantity limits in them for different classes of chemicals that you can have stored or in use in a building. And what we do in the designs of these buildings is we, we compartmentalize. We, we create fire areas in a building. And our codes tell us that we can only have up to a certain number of gallons in the case of a liquid. Cubic feet for a gas, pounds for a solid. In the case of a liquid, um, cubic feet for a gas, pounds for a solid. In each of these fire areas in a building. Those thresholds are quite low. Especially when we take a look at something like GMP, um, pharmaceutical or biologics manufacturing. Um, and I'll just give you an example, right? So the, the typical liquid. That's used in this type of processing. Um, is isopropyl alcohol. So a very common solvent. Um, you know, just in, in society, but it's, it's used very, very much in. You know, the development and manufacture of drug compounds. So. Um, when we look at that, it happens to be a flammable liquid. But the quantity thresholds in our codes for how much isopropyl alcohol. You could have in storage and in use in a fire area in a building. Is low compared to what tenants are gonna need to develop their process and manufacture. You know, small quantities for trials and for proof of concept. So. This is why, um, we're saying with open eyes that. You know, a tenant coming into a facility like this is likely going to need a high hazard use. And I agree completely that it, it does sound very ominous. But it's, it's only ominous because the, the nomenclature in the code calls it high hazard. So we, we refer to it as group H, you know, in our, in our nomenclature of uses in a building, right? So, um, the point being that. We're looking very clearly at what a tenant will need and saying. You know, absolutely, they could change their purchasing strategy. They could bring materials in multiple times a week. On the raw material side, they could also have hazardous waste pickups multiple times a week. To reduce those quantities that are in storage. Where we see often that we need a high hazard use is in the processing. And not so much so in a laboratory, but in a facility like this. Where the batch sizes of the, of the pharmaceutical compounds are slightly larger. Um, but as of happening is, even if you increase your deliveries and your pickups. If I were to walk into a facility and take a snapshot on any given day of their process. The amount that's actually in the process, you know, in the, in the equipment. Often will exceed what our codes allow for what we call closed system process. And so while we may not need a high hazard for storage, perhaps. We would end up needing one for the processing. And so the tenant. There isn't a whole lot they can do at that point, other than carve out a relatively small space in the facility and call it high hazard use. And we've got different ways to do that in the, in the code and different types of high hazard as well. But then we end up equipping it with all the architectural and engineering features that we talked about, uh, last time. So the re, the other thing I want to mention in terms of the market, right? So in the Boston area, as an example, um, the reason why there is a need. Um, and this is, I'd say, within the past, you know, two to three years for what we're calling spec GMP. Right? For a long time, for the best probably twenty five, thirty years, there's been a need for laboratories. Only recently, now we have a drive where companies want to locate. Their small scale manufacturing out in the suburbs of Boston. And a lot of it has to do with supply chain issues. For many years, we had companies that just said, okay, we're gonna have our R and D in Massachusetts. And we're going to, even on a small scale, have our GMP proof of concept down in North Carolina. Or Ohio, or another state altogether. But because of supply chain problems, and I think we saw that accentuated during the pandemic especially. Um, more and more, uh, pharmaceutical and biologics companies are saying, you know what? We're gonna have a small scale facility within an hour's drive of our R and D facility. So tenants that might have their R and D in Cambridge or Boston, in a, you know, one floor of a lab building. Now we're saying, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my next, you know, batch size up in Woburn. Or in one of the other communities we mentioned. Are there any questions on, on what I just stated?
Any board member questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Oh, Mike, go right ahead.
To Mr. Eisenberg, um, uh, uh, on that, so you talked about bad sizes, you know, in, in the manufacturing of these, um, products. I just, you know, we just got through. Um, granting that project on Cabot Road, eh, that pharmaceutical. Uh, use place on. Can you give me a, an idea? I'm not sure if you're familiar with, with that or maybe, um, Tina. Could give me an idea on the size of that facility versus what could possibly. If this goes through, would be put in this area. Um, because there was a lot of, to me, that was a very large manufacturing facility. And it's kind of not what I envisioned going down here. Um, maybe if, if, I can kind of compare and contrast in my mind, the difference between the two. I'd, I'd be better to, off to make a decision. Um, Tina, I don't know if you're in a position to kind of, to, to do that.
Um, the only thing I can say, uh, recall that might be helpful here, Mike, is I believe the size of that building. Was sixty five thousand square feet with the addition. And it was, and I believe that it is a high hazard. They will need a high hazard, but they are far enough removed from residential. That it will not be an issue for them. That's my understanding.
I could speak to this. Um, so we reviewed the transcript and the recording. Of the, uh, city council meeting that happened, uh, where continuous pharmaceuticals was presenting. Our understanding of it is that, um. They, they are not limiting themselves to accessory high hazard use. Um, they're acknowledging that they might need more than ten percent. Of the area on a floor of the building for high hazard. And I think that's, to your point, I think that's because they're full scale manufacturing. Whereas our project is not, um, what we're saying is. Even if we need a relatively small, i.e. aggregate less than ten percent of the floor area, high hazard use. Um, you know, we want that ability to be able to have the Davis companies come in and say to prospective tenants. Hey, come to Woburn, you know, into this facility and you, you have the flexibility. You know, knowing that you, I think there's a very good chance that you're gonna need a, a relatively small processing space. You know, um, possibly a storage room, but the storage room is really not, you know, these storage rooms are like. You know, two hundred square feet. They're not big, but it's the process areas. Again, less than ten percent of the floor, but I, I think it's just the reality. Of, of the market, what's, what the market needs right now.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks for putting that in perspective. Thank you.
You said, Mike. All right. So are there more questions at this juncture? I don't see any, so feel free, uh, counselor, keep on, keep on presenting or, uh, let us know when your presentation is complete.
I think we are, um, done with sort of the initial presentation and happy to answer any additional questions, um, that the board has.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I would ask the board members to, if, uh, there are questions. About the projects that, that remain outstanding, you know, now would be a great time, uh, to get those out in the open. And, uh, let me, let me stop there and see if there, if there are questions or if there are discussion points at this point. That, um, you feel like you'd like to bring forward.
Claudia.
Jim, go right ahead.
Mike, through the chair to Tina. Mine is, the question is, has the city's assessors office evaluated? This zoning change for the different uses, which is the best beneficial for our tax rate?
No, no, they have not.
Can you tell me who the sponsor of this proposal is for a city council?
There is no city council, uh, sponsor. This was directly submitted by attorney Tarby on behalf of the petitioner, which, uh. Technically was.
That's right.
The Davis companies.
Thank you. That's all I have, Claudia.
Okay. Um, any other questions? From board members? All right, I am not seeing questions. So at this point, um. Tina, do you have a recommendation or any other guidance, uh, for the board members?
Yes, I would recommend that we open the public hearing segment and see if there's any additional public testimony. Uh, for members of the public who are here. And then, uh, if not, I'd consider recommending that you close the public hearing. And we can work on a recommendation.
All right. So this is a public hearing. If there are any members of the audience that wishes to speak on this proposal. Um, Tina will, uh, give you instructions as to how to let us know you would like to speak.
Good. I see one person already knows. Uh, what I'd like you to do, uh, is hover your cursor at the bottom of your screen. And you'll see a reactions button. And if you click on that, you'll see a feature that allows you to quote, raise your hand. Click on that and I'll be able to tell that you would like to address the board. Um, Madam Chairman, I see one, uh. Oh, I did see. One individual. Goodness, it was a person with the name of Sean's iPhone and he seems to have. Oh, so here we are. I apologize. There you go. Could you please give your full name and address for the record and then make your remarks?
Yes, um, Sean Sullivan, uh, three eighty seven Mass Park Ave, Sharon, Mass. Um, I am the senior vice president of real estate for National Amusement Inc., which is the owner and operator of the showcase property. Um, I, I was unfortunately unable to participate in last week's meeting. However, I, I did hear that there was a fair amount of discussion regarding potential uses on the property. And why this might be something that would be pursued versus other uses. And I just wanted to point out that we had marketed this on a much more broad spectrum. Uh, in years past and about four and a half years ago, I met with several members of, uh, several city officials. Um, to try to discuss a path forward on this. Uh, it was very clear, we were told specifically car dealerships, multifamily housing. Big box users, last mile distribution, uh, were not going to be acceptable. Uh, and would not be well received by the city despite significant interest. Um, and significant offers from users such as that, we listened to what the city had to say. And pursued a use that was more favorably received by the city. Um, so I just wanted to make it clear that while there are alternative uses, there has to be an economic. Um, element to this, obviously, uh, the, it is a valuable piece of property. And we have steered away from the things that might yield the highest return on a purchase price. In order to acknowledge that the city has the right to be able to express their interest of support or lack of support. And I think that we tried to be a very good neighbor in bringing forth the Davis company, which is. Uh, unparalleled in their experience in New England. Um, and that's, that's about it, Tina. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
I, I see no others.
All right, there are no other hands raised, so I would entertain a motion regarding the status of the public hearing.
I'll, I'll make a motion of the close of public hearing.
All right, a motion, motion has ma- been made by Mike. There has been a second by Carolyn, correct?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I would call for a roll call vote, please.
Kim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventreska.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Aye. That motion is five in favor and none opposed. The public hearing is closed. Um. Tina, do you have a recommendation?
So, uh, yes, well, yes, I have probably, uh, a couple. One is that I did draft, uh, for the board's consideration based on the discussion. Uh, last week as I understood it, uh, seemed to be drifting toward a negative recommendation on, uh, the zoning amendment. But also in acknowledgement that there were a number of points, um, specific to the proposed ordinance change. That the board would recommend if the council were to rezone, um, that they, uh, consider imposing them as conditions of approval. Uh, the letter that I had drafted, uh, cited a number of things that board members had mentioned last week. And that was, uh, the concern about lifting the current fifteen hundred square, fifteen hundred foot distance requirement. For the high hazard uses to a hundred and twenty five feet and two hundred and fifty feet from the district lines. And nearest residences. There were also mentioned, uh, uh, a number of other concerns about potential emissions. From the rooftop mechanical equipment that couldn't be analyzed at this point. Uh, an inability to identify, uh, a clear public benefit to the rezoning was mentioned by at least one member. And then also cited the necessity of adopting definitions. We discussed the fact that the terms life sciences and research and development are used in the proposed LBOD text. But those are uses that are not yet defined in the Woburn zoning ordinance. Um, tonight, though, we've heard, uh, a number of additional things that may or may not change that. Um, certainly the testimony perhaps about the job creation and the tax revenue may have adequately addressed. Uh, the concern about no clear public benefit to the rezoning. Um, we haven't heard much about the emissions tonight, but we've heard significantly more about the high hazard use. I think it's important to point out that I had also done some research at the board's request. And I can confirm what, um, what you said earlier, Madam Chairman, about, uh, the way companies that are in Woburn now. Are using sort of materials management, um, skills to, uh, address. This existing provision that admittedly has been on the books for decades. So I started with a recommendation or I drafted one based on the comments I heard last evening, uh, the last segment of the hearing. But I am wondering if the testimony here this evening has changed that for any of the board members. Such that you might feel that this is perhaps a potentially appropriate place for this type of use. Based on some of the alternatives and, and, and also on the benefits, uh, as they stand alone with this proposal.
All right, Tina, thank you. So what is the will of the board at this point?
Madam Chair.
Mike, please go right ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, I was never really dead set against this. You know, so I, to send a, a recommendation to the city council, either negatively or positively. Um, you know, I, I, what, what we're doing is just recommend, recommending, you know, some wording to, to this zoning ordinance. That's the way I'm looking at it. You know, I was, I, I think. This could be a viable use for this. Um, this zone down there, so, you know, um, but. The way it's currently written, it, it needs some more work. And I think our recommendation kind of highlights some work that's, that's required to be done. So, you know, I don't want to say it's, it's a negative, you know, a negative recommendation and then have them not adhere to what we're kind of showing them. Do, do you understand, Claudia, what I'm, what I'm getting at? Uh, it's.
Um, not quite, so.
So, I mean, I, I, I would be more in favor for something like this developed to go in if they. Follow through with some of these recommended changes that we're suggesting to the city council.
So what I'm hearing is that you would be willing to send a favorable recommendation to the city council. If the city council addressed the concerns that are. enumerated in items one through six?
Correct.
Because I, I mean, you know, that, that is definitely a possibility. I think that with regard to each one of them, though, there needs to be discussion because it sounds to me like what the presenters have told us today that even if other life sciences or manufacturing or other companies in the city are able to manage their high hazard uses to deal with this fifteen hundred foot requirement, the, the tenants of this building, just in the, in the, in the context of their production of the thing that they want to produce, will not be able to do that. So it kind of is, you know, it, it's one thing to say, you know, I, I might be favorably inclined, but you know, all of these things need to be addressed without addressing some of them that are kind of deal breakers. Like, you know, you can't say, okay, fine, you know, the L-Bod, but, you know, keep the fifteen hundred foot thing in place and, you know, don't allow them to have the roof structures that they need in order to, you know, do the venting. Do you see my point? Like, it's, it's a situation where you sort of are going, you know, if generally you're in favor of attracting this sort of use to this particular parcel, then, you know, some hard sort of decisions need to be made because you can't give with one hand and take with the other, then you end up with nothing. And that's kind of, you know, maybe not the best.
Right, right. I see what you're saying.
Would it be worthwhile just articulating, for those that may not have seen this, and those are most of the audience members, just for me to articulate what those six items were?
Yes, that would be great.
So the, the draft letter, at least as it's currently written, and probably would in its final form, say something along these lines. If the council decides to create the new overlay district, the planning board would recommend to consider making the following changes to the proposed text prior to adoption. The first one would be to ensure that underbuilding parking levels do count toward the calculation of a building's height, and that would be accomplished by adding a provision, a new subsection thirty-two, six, one, five, that would say parking facilities within a building shall be included in the calculation of a building's height, notwithstanding the definition of height of a building in section two, and the provisions of section six point one table of dimensional regulations. Now, note on that, that Attorney Attorney Tarby indicated that the applicant had no issues with that particular condition.
All right, so, so one, e- even if, you know, even if we said, hey, you know, this, this needs to change, that's no sort of deal breaker for this particular L-Bod.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
The, the second thing that would be a recommendation would be that the amount of a building allowed to exceed the maximum height requirement be significantly reduced. In the proposed text, it does call for up to fifteen percent of the total roof area would be allowed to have rooftop structures extending as much as thirty-five feet above the roof. And by contrast, the L, the T-Bod permits only three percent of the total roof area to exceed that height by that amount. So the letter as drafted recommends that the board, that the city council replace the fifteen percent figure they're requesting with three percent. And I would not say the applicant is not necessarily, the applicant is not supportive of that change. My understanding is that they feel that they would like a higher number to provide the flexibility. The last meeting, I think we heard testimony that said they didn't know that they would need to have as much as fifteen percent of the roof extending to that height, but they wanted the flexibility because they didn't know the specific needs of each individual tenant.
Okay.
Third thing was, the L-Bod does use terms that should be defined in the ordinance. I mentioned them, life sciences and research and development. The suggestion would be that definitions be adopted either simultaneously with an action of the L-Bod or as soon as possible thereafter, prior certainly, hopefully, to any particular specific applications. And further recommends that the council consider putting those definitions in section two, the general definition section, and any parking requirements related to them in section eight, so that they can be applied citywide, not just in the L-Bod.
And is, is your understanding that the applicant has no issue with that? I mean, that just strikes me as a good cleanup.
Yes, I, I, I heard no objection to that. I, the only concern would be is if the board were to recommend that it be done prior to the rezoning, that would probably be a difficulty. So.
Understood.
That's not, not what we're suggesting. The fourth is that the setback requirement for high hazard uses should be near, measured from the nearest residential zoning district boundary line only, and not from both the nearest zoning boundary line and residences. The proposed L-Bod does call for both two hundred and fifty feet from residents that existed as of September first, twenty twenty-one, and a hundred and twenty-five feet from the nearest residential zoning district boundary line. The building inspector has indicated that the setback that would apply to residences could be problematic for the L-Bod in the future in that if somebody were to put an addition on an existing home and it punctured the two hundred and fifty foot setback, it could render L-Bod uses nonconforming with respect to high hazard. So the recommendation is to follow what the ordinance says today about high hazard, which is just measuring it to the zoning district boundary line. The fifth would be that a setback for rooftop structures should be specified. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance now relative to wireless communication links, and the board would recommend similar language be added to the L-Bod that would be something along the following. Any structures erected on the roof of a building shall be setback a minimum of fifteen feet from all sides of the building. At the last public hearing segment, we heard a general, I believe, ascent to understanding and accepting the notion of a setback, but the applicant stopped short of saying that fifteen feet would not be problematic. So I don't know if the number is an issue for the petitioner, but certainly the concept of a setback was not. Lastly, there is a redundancy in the proposed text. The proposed section thirty-two, six, one, five has two different lines relative to maximum building height, and there's really no, there's no difference in the number. It calls for in subsection eight, a maximum height of forty feet, and subsection nine says a maximum building height of forty feet for buildings within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential zoning district. So where they are both the same, one can certainly be stricken. I would recommend subsection nine so that there is one clear height limitation, and those are the six.
Okay, well, it sounds like many of those are, are cleanups that would significantly improve the sort of technical text of the ordinance. And with respect to the substance of some of them, you know, if there was to be a favorable recommendation, then some of those would have to definitely be adopted. So if there was to be a negative recommendation, obviously not. So. So anyway, Mike, so in response to your, your, your comment, you know, those are the sort of nitty gritty details that, you know, need to be wrestled with.
Right, and, and I, I feel that, you know, we're putting forth a recommendation to the city council, and with the applicant, you know, bottle with them. I mean, there'll be some, I know that, that there's, doesn't to me, the only one that could be a major showstopper is, is I don't know, for the setback requirement. You know, and, and I feel the other ones could possibly be addressed. The setback requirement is probably the major issue. So, you know, like I said, I, I, I feel, you know, it sounds like a decent use to, you know, what could go down there is just the matter of hashing out these details with the city council. And, you know, I think we put forth a decent recommendation as far as, you know, the details of some of the, you know, getting down to the meat of the matter with, with this stuff and, and, you know, we're, we're putting forth in front of the city council and let, let the applicant hash it out with, with them, you know? I don't mean to just throw it over the fence to them, but I think we, we, you know, we spent a decent amount of time on this, and I, I feel like, you know, these are some good points that should be, you know, brought forth in front of them.
Okay, are, are you set for the moment, Mike?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, Bob.
Yes.
Go right ahead.
So I, I, I see what Mike's saying. I, when I read Tina's draft, I, I liked it as was because I guess probably because it, it, I felt as though what I had been saying was in there to begin with. Because the main, the first question is whether or not you want to approve an L-BOD. I mean, that's what really is being presented to us. And in Mike's case, I, I think, and Mike, you correct me here, but it, it seems like what you're saying is you'd like to send a favorable, favorable to the city council as long as they adopt the things that are on there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, and, and in my case, I don't even agree with an L-BOD. I don't think, that's why in, in Tina's recommendation, she's saying that we're not really in favor of it, but if you're gonna do it, these are all the things you should consider. And that's exactly how I feel.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of it, but that doesn't mean, you know, the city council can do whatever, whatever they want. But if they're gonna do it, I felt as though it was really good that we have all these, all these other things that we've talked about for the last three weeks basically in there. And so that's, that's why I liked the draft, the way, the way it was without changing it. And I think it sounded like to me you were saying we should send a favorable recommendation, but only if you do this.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. You, you're saying. I, I, I.
It's easy to say we, it's not a favorable recommendation, but if you're going to do it, you should try to think about this.
Yeah.
Bob, are you good?
I am.
Okay, all right. Any, who, who would, who would like to jump in next?
Claudia, sorry, I'm trying to raise my hand.
There we go.
Okay, Carolyn.
Please, please. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just to follow up on Bob's comment. I agree, and I also agree with the, the way Tina presented the proposed recommendation as drafted. I don't think it's appropriate to say, okay, we'll approve this as written, but only if you change it, or only if you make these further, if you make these further considerations and proposed changes. So that's why I would be in favor of presenting it that way to the city council. Second, on, on the substance of the way it is proposed, I do have a question through the chair to Tina. I know we talked about the roof structures, excuse me, and having the fifteen percent down reduced to three percent, and also extending no more than thirty feet above the roof line, which was consistent with the T-Bod, correct?
Thirty-five feet, yes, consistent with the T-Bod.
Right, okay. So under the provisions for the T-Bod, it talks about the maximum height of forty feet. Correct?
Oh, I apologize. I thought it was thirty-five. Perhaps I'm misreading. Maybe I misread it.
So I think, I'm sorry, the T-Bod is thirty-five feet, and the proposed amendment here would be forty feet.
I thought it was, I thought it was thirty-five in the proposal. Let me grab it.
Okay. So I'm under the density and dimensional regulations thirty-two point six.
I apologize, I'm searching. I'm sure I have it somewhere. I cannot find it, but I'm gonna trust you to read it to me. You guys have a copy, so I apologize.
If I'm looking at the right version, I hope I'm looking at the right version. So I believe what's being proposed is the maximum building height of forty feet within a hundred feet of a residential zoning district, correct?
The building, yes, the maximum building height would be forty feet, and then there are parts of the roof that would be allowed to be higher than forty feet for certain, yes.
Okay. But my point is, under the T-Bod, the maximum height of thirty-five feet within a hundred and fifty feet of a, of an R1 district.
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
Correct, that, there is, it is a little bit bigger in the T-Bod, yes.
Okay, is that something that we should be considering, should be at thirty-five feet as well?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't considered the question before now. I don't know. I know that they did some analyses of the proposed height, and we're comfortable that by adding in, either adding parking underbuilding or not having any parking underbuilding didn't cause them an issue. But I don't know if reducing the height of the building by five feet in any way meaningfully impacts what they have planned for uses in the building. I'd have to defer that, I think, to the petitioner. I, I, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't contemplated this before.
Okay, I, I guess my thought was in looking at, you know, we're keeping consistent with the thirty-five feet above the roof line, and then under the general provisions of both the T-Bod and the L-Bod, we have forty feet within a hundred and fifty feet of our R1 versus thirty-five feet building height within a hundred and fifty feet of an R1 zone.
But certainly a fair question, as you said, if we're using the T-Bod as an example for other percentages.
Correct, and it's the same issue as far as a hundred and fifty feet within an R1 district.
The one thing I'm not sure, yes, yes, it could be. I'm just wondering, I think in the T-Bod, the maximum building height is much greater than forty feet, I think. I'll check that. No need for you.
You're saying the maximum building height in general?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's eighty feet. Right? I think it's eighty and then thirty-five if it's within a hundred and fifty feet of an R1.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so to your point, are you saying maximum building heights forty feet in the proposed, proposed amendment, and then forty feet within will actually be thirty-five within a zoning?
Maximum building height of forty feet, and then there are certain, certain elements or certain structures that could exceed the forty feet in height. They could actually go an additional, in some cases, as much as thirty-five feet.
Right.
But it's limited as to how much of the building could be higher, and that's where it's fifteen or three.
Reduced to three, correct, okay. Okay, I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to jump in?
Claudia.
Jim, go right ahead.
I'd like to concur with Bob and Carolyn. I think I don't think this proposal, one, should really be taking this path for any type of overlay district vetting. I like the process that we've used over the last several years to vet out a lot of these issues that we're trying to iron out now, particularly over Zoom. And the discussions that have taken place in the past were pretty fruitful. I don't think that this is a completely negative proposal they have in front of them, but I think there's still work to be done. So I, I cannot support a favorable recommendation to the council on this proposal.
Okay, so what is the will of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to forward the draft letter that the director has come up with to the city council.
All right, there is a motion by Bob. All right, there is a motion by Bob. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Second by Carolyn for discussion. So I'll jump in on the discussion. I just want to explain why I will be voting against this. I do think that the proposal has merit, and I think that the city, I would send, if it was, if it was me, a favorable recommendation to the city council with the various caveats that we've talked about. And at the very end of the letter, as it's going to say, I I do agree with the very end of the letter, which is, you know, our zoning ordinance needs to be brought into the the timeframe that we're living in and needs to be updated. And I guess I would send a favorable recommendation because it's 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 certainly not the petitioner's fault that they're the first ones, you know, the the canary in the coal mine, so to speak, to sort of highlight the inadequacies of our zoning ordinance for this particular use generally. So I wouldn't penalize the petitioner for that. I think the LBOD has merit, and that is why I will be voting against this, not because I disagree with the six thoughts at the end of the letter. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
For the chair.
Jim.
And rebuttal to your comment, Claudia. I don't think this is about a petitioner, and that's my concern. This is about a overlay district rezoning. And they presented it, and that's where my concern lies. That a lot of these issues and the restructuring of the city bylaws that may be outdated or have omissions and errors could be corrected at that point before the proposal moves forward to a planning board, then forwarded on to city council for for considerations. I think that's where the cleaning up and the vetting process is missing here. That's because that's where I stand with things.
All right, Jim, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just kind of to to talk. So Jim, would you feel something like this would have been handled better in like the environment that was once Zork? As only ordinance review committee?
For the chair, one hundred percent correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thanks, Jim.
All right, Michael, you said?
Yeah.
All right, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing not a motion has been made and seconded, I would call for a roll call vote, please.
Jim Callahan.
Just for clarification, please. This is a negative proposal, correct?
Jim, I believe the motion was to adopt the planning board director's draft recommendation as is. Was that right, Bob? That was the motion, right?
It it is, it is. And in the draft, it it does say that we are not recommending this proposal.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Vintresca.
Nay.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Nay. All right, the motion carries three, two. I wish the petitioner good luck with the council. All right, um, is there any other business matters not known at the time of posting that may legally come before the board? Tina?
There are none.
All right, there being no other business in front of the board, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion that at, well, my clock says eight fifteen, that we close the planning board meeting.
All right, there is a motion to adjourn by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn, roll call vote, please.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
I'm gonna say aye, but I also want to say that I never say it as eloquent eloquently as Claudia does.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Vintresca.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Aye, thank you all, and we will reconvene on February fourteenth for our next planning board meeting.
Did you mean December fourteen?
Oh, gosh. What did I say? Well, I guess that tells you how I'd like my particular end of year to go, doesn't it? Alas, all right, no, December fourteenth. Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Karen, for the preparation, and we will see each other next month.
Good, thanks.
All right, thank you.